Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the Monday, June 16th, 2025 meeting of the Attleboro School Committee. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. The first item on the agenda is introduction of new administrators, and for that I'll turn it over to Superintendent Sawyer.
Thank you Chairman. Yep, we're excited this evening to be able to introduce some of the new administrators that we've been able to hire for the upcoming school year. And so to kick that off, I'll first invite up Principal Campbell.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to have Sean Abernathy, Mr. Sean Abernathy, join us as well, who I'll be introducing. As you all know, I will be very sad to miss my entire staff, especially my admin team at the high school. And one of the things that I feel really good about, about the team is that Sean's going to be joining the admin team. I've worked closely with Sean as a department head over the past couple of years, and his leadership really, it stood out. And it shines in his disposition, in his relationships, and how he handles and pivots difficult situations when they occur. But I think House Three is going to be in very good hands with having Sean as the AP and part of the admin team. So I know that Sean wanted to share a couple of things with you as well.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Sean Abernathy. I've been with Attleboro Public Schools since 2018. First, I was at Brennan Middle School, and then more recently at the high school as the House Four physics teacher and the science department head. So in my time here since 2018, I bore witness to teachers who have given their all for their students. I've seen teachers responsively reform their own teaching practices to better educate their students. I've seen teachers give their personal time, efforts, and resources to make sure their students have the most memorable and positive experience they can have in their school community. I've seen teachers push their students to achieve academic levels that were a surprise to everyone, except of course, their teachers. And I can truly say that it is an inspiring place to work as an educator. During my years in Attleboro, I've actively sought out leadership roles, and when the opportunity arose to take the House Three Assistant Principalship, the decision to accept was an obvious one. At AHS, I feel like I've found my professional home. In fact, as of this year, my entire family is in this building. My wife is a teacher down the hallway, my four-year-old daughter, and my two-year-old son is in the learning community. And so it really isn't possible for me to be more invested in the success of this building. In my next position, I will be continuing to support Attleboro students, and I would, I'm really looking forward to working with the admin team to continue our current successes and achieve new ones. So thank you again for having me, thank you for this opportunity, and I cannot wait to get started.
Well, welcome to the new position, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I know you've got some big shoes to fill, so any questions or comments?
Great, what position are you?
House Three Assistant Principal.
Any other questions or comments? Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Now I'd like to call up Ms. Maderas.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to announce, as you all know, Robbie Willamere, after many years, is retiring this year at the end of the year, and we were looking for a new Network Director. I'm going to just describe the Network because it's such a unique program here in Attleboro in our continuum of services. It's our most restrictive program. It's the equivalent of a collaborative program in an auto district, so it's a day program. It's a therapeutic at the high school level. I want to acknowledge the screening committee. We had a nice representation of staff, special educators, our school adjustment counselor, paraprofessional, our team facilitator. Jeff Crowdu is our finalist. He went through an extensive interview process. He interviewed with the screening committee, with myself, got some input from Dave. He actually came on site and did a visit on site, spent some time up at the Network, met with Robbie, met some students, met the staff, and feedback was extremely positive, even from the students, on kind of his interaction at that point. Jeff is joining us from Central Falls as an elementary principal, but he's extensive experience in special education. Prior to that, he was in Southbridge as a special ed administrator at the high school level. He's been a principal director for collaboratives, similar programs in Bellingham. He's been a middle school principal, lots of experience in general ed and special ed. So I'm pleased to announce Jeff Crowdu as our finalist as the network, the next Network Director. So I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you for having me. I'd like to thank Ms. Maderas and the entire screening committee for a rigorous process. As Ms. Maderas said, I've had many experiences, and I've always gone to things that interest me, but I feel like I'm now going back home to what I do and that I really enjoy doing. As she said, I was a middle school principal. I wanted to know the K-12 experience, so I've done the last few years as an elementary principal. All of my administration has been in Massachusetts, other than, most recently, back in Rhode Island. I'm from Providence, but I really like the program, and I really look forward to working with the teachers and working with the kids in this type of alternative pathway to their high school graduation, because everyone doesn't fit in that nice square little box. So, thank you.
Congratulations to you as well, and welcome to Attleboro. I know it sounds like your experience will be tremendously beneficial to the team at Network. And again, you also have big shoes to fill, but does anybody have any questions or comments?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to call up Mr. Bowles.
This is John McNeil. I'd like to introduce him also. Before I introduce John formally, just like to welcome and thank you all of you for your time tonight. I think I've been in front of the School Committee the most with all the assistant principals that have left Coello and moved on to Wamsara and Brennan and other various districts. So this is not anything new to Coello itself, but just a little bit about the process. Well, obviously, the resignation of Mr. Husband, there was a void in the administrative team. So we did put out the posting, hoping for a number of candidates that we can pick from, and we're happy to say that we received over 25 applicants for the position. At that point in time, Coello decided to put the instructional leadership team together along with three other teachers to creating a screening committee, which was headed by the wonderful Assistant Principal Lindsay Antunes, who took charge of the screening committee. They made three recommendations to myself, Mr. McNeil being one of them, obviously. And then myself and Lindsay had a great conversation with John, and we instantaneously knew that he would fit the Attleboro Public Schools and was, what Dave so eloquently said, one of us on Thursday night. We are excited to have him part of the team. We feel he completes our team and what we need at Coello Middle School. John, we'll go a little bit more into his background, but what we liked most and what really spoke to us about John's potential at Coello was when we walked around the building and instantaneously made a connection with students who he did not know, welcoming them, greeting them, and being part of them. And the same thing happened today when he came to visit the staff and students for the day. Instantaneously started just speaking with kids as he had known them for the last four years, meeting and talking with staff on a personal level, getting to know them also. So I do want to formally welcome Mr. McNeil to Attleboro Public Schools and the Coello Middle School.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you, Mr. Bowles, for that great introduction.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you guys for not having all of us follow a long budget meeting. I really appreciate that. Again, I'm John McNeil. I'm truly excited to be joining Attleboro Public Schools as the new Assistant Principal at Coello. I've spent the last several years in education, working with students from all walks of life, and most recently served as Assistant Education Director at Meadow Ridge Academy, where I've been fulfilling a pretty big vocation there. If you know anything about that school, it's a, you know, it's a very trying place, but a very rewarding place to be an administrator or an educator. The, Coello, or what drew me to Attleboro and Coello in particular was the energy, integrity, and the clear sense of community. The practical and pragmatic approach to student centrality is part of my vocation as an educator, and I got that true sense from both Lindsay and Andy when I visited. You can feel it when you walk into the building. I've been in there three times now, and you can feel that community, that culture, that climate, that really kind of fits what I'm looking for as an administrator. And it's not just about test scores there. I understand that it is more practical and pragmatic. It's about kids growing into their best selves, which is what my vocation is to fulfill as a practical matter. I'm also a dad. My daughter's here tonight, and I know what it means to entrust your children to a school and to an administrative team. It's a responsibility that I don't take lightly, and it's an honor to now help lead a school community that takes that trust seriously, too. So I want to thank you guys all, especially Andy, for the warm welcome. I'm excited to get to work with the incredible team at Coello, and I look forward to a great school year ahead. Nice to meet you all.
Welcome. And as Andy mentioned, you're replacing someone that eventually became a principal, so we're fortunate to have such skilled administrators that they are brought into other leadership roles. But we're grateful to have a strong bullpen that we can draw from and bring in when needed. Any questions or comments, Mr. Domenici?
You kind of hit on it. I mean, every principal in our middle schools came through Coello, so kudos to you.
Because of Lindsay.
Well, it says something about the ability to find talent, so I'm excited. My youngest is, got two more years still in your care, so.
Oh, great.
Looking forward to seeing you all around Coello, so best of luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, guys.
Mr. Storrs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Talking of Andy, my understanding, you have a military background, is that right?
Say it again.
You have a military background?
I do, sir, yeah.
So that's great. You know, as a veteran, I love seeing our veterans, you know, as staff, especially in the administrative level, so very much welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Welcome aboard. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you guys so much. Very excited.
Thank you.
That's the last one, Mr. Sawyer? That's it for now. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of the Attleboro Special Education Parent Advisory Council Board. And for that, I'd like to invite up Heather Jutress and Janine Leveque. So earlier this year, dating back as far as September, I know Ms. Maderas has been discussing bringing back the ACE PAC for this academic year. A group met to reform ACE PAC back in March. They've since held a nomination meeting and an election meeting and an initial board meeting, and so I've invited the two co-chairs tonight to come introduce themselves to the committee and just share some initial thoughts on their plans going forward.
Good evening all. My name is Janine Leveque, and this is Heather Jutress. We are here tonight representing the Attleboro Special Education Parent Advisory Council, also known as ACE PAC. We're happy to share with you that ACE PAC has recently elected a new board. In fact, several of these board members are here with me tonight. Over the last few meetings, ACE PAC has seen promising attendance by general members, and we look forward to continuing to grow our membership. Having a functional CPAC is a vital part of our school community, and we're excited to begin to work to reestablish connections across Attleboro. Tonight, we wanted to highlight some basic information about ACE PAC, which serves as an advisory council to both the School Committee and the District's Special Education Department. While ACE PAC cannot make decisions on policy, programs, and services, ACE PAC's role is to provide advice and feedback to both the School Committee and Special Education Department across these areas. ACE PAC is a volunteer organization whose mission is to: support and encourage an innovative educational environment where students with disabilities have equal access to educational opportunities in a community environment where all students are encouraged to reach their full potential; promote a network for Attleboro families by providing a forum to share information and discuss matters of relative interest concerning their children's educational journey; support communication and programs within the community to encourage understanding, respect, acceptance, and inclusion of all students; collaborate with the school community in order to continuously improve the educational opportunities available through the Attleboro Public Schools for students with disabilities. Over the summer, the new ACE PAC board will be working diligently to prepare for the new school year. Future general meetings and workshops will be shared on our Facebook page, facebook.com/attlebrowcpac. We will also work with the individual schools and programs to have the upcoming meetings included in the standard weekly school communications. Those interested in learning more, or those with questions or concerns, are encouraged to reach out to the ACE PAC board at cpac@attleboro@gmail.com. And that's C-P-A-C, S-E-P-A-C, attleboro@gmail.com. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. So, special education, I've heard a lot of feedback over the last few months that this committee and this district does not care about special education and that we've been doing nothing about concerns that have been raised over the past school year. And I want to take a moment to share some reflections on some of that. Special education is a difficult and entangled area that deserves attention but generates a complex puzzle of requiring expertise and resources to solve. First and foremost, I want to start by saying that, again, special education in Attleboro is not perfect. It never has been, and I do not imagine that it ever will be perfect, excuse me, for every student and every family situation at all times. But over the last couple of months, I've had dozens of discussions with people about the current state of special education in Attleboro and beyond, and after significant time and lengthy personal reflection on these conversations, I've developed an evolving perspective. I've arrived at the natural observation that every family's situation and experience is unique and different. Perspectives vary based on level of school, the school itself, even the educator or administrator. Some families feel that they easily access services to their students' needs, while others felt that it was a tremendous struggle and that they are still experiencing that struggle. Some had experiences with, some great experiences with specific schools but not others, and other families shared the opposite experiences. The same was true with elementary versus middle versus high school. These conversations are a resounding reminder that with 1,300 students receiving accommodations, you're going to hear about 1,300 different experiences. Along the way, I spoke to some staff in the district that feel very supported and understand the decisions that are made, while others feel like there should be better communication to help them understand decisions and changes to policy and/or procedures. Again, with hundreds of staff supporting dozens of programs, one can anticipate a variety of experiences. I've had, I've heard a few consistencies across all of these discussions, and those helped me better understand some of these concerns. Many families spend a tremendous amount of emotional energy to provide scaffolding for their child at a very young age in order to manage the family life based on their children's needs. These structures become critical baseline experiences for families and children. On the other hand, the goal of special education is to provide the least restrictive educational environment for students so that they can use the supports as needed but become more independent learners without scaffolding. I believe that this is the gap that Mr. Bennett referenced back in March. It's between a family's established structure and the goals of independent learning, and sometimes that gap feels insurmountable, while at other times, there is a clear and obvious solution. At times, a student has clear needs, and at others, there is significant testing needed. In some extreme cases, families feel they need to seek legal action to come to a resolution. Overall, I believe that our schools generally are very well-equipped to support students, to support and address student needs with minimal needs and accommodations, but have more difficulty providing support for students and families with more severe needs. I'm not saying that these needs are never supported, but there is a naturally increased difficulty in handling some situations. Complicate things, our long-discussed budgetary, excuse me, funding shortfalls, and increased shortages in staffing further help, that could further help students and families perhaps improve upon their plan with the school. I believe on this, I believe that everyone on this committee would love to see additional services provided, service providers in the schools, and other professionals at each building, and that all testing could be done as requested across the district without families needing to go to doctors and hospitals. I believe that everyone on this committee would also love to see staffing levels at each building be able to help the district and families balance, find the balance between life scaffolding and the increased independence. But as has been stated on multiple occasions, this district is underfunded by about $12 million and short about 200 staff of providing the level of services that would be ideal for our school community. This includes additional special education staff, general classroom teachers, clerical staff, administrative positions, and more, that could help the district more efficiently and effectively serve all students and families. This committee and the administration continue to work, continue the work that it has done for years to stretch each dollar to its limit to maximize what we receive, while also advocating for more funding to ease these concerns. None of this, the potential gap between family and school objectives, the spectrum of services needed and provided, nor our funding limitations, is referenced as an excuse. Rather, I see these as a renewal of our work as a committee. I commit to our community that as long as I am Chair, this committee will advocate to fully support all of our students with a mindset of equity and inclusion towards student success with the resources provided. As has been stated, these are not problems that are unique to Attleboro. Other districts grapple with providing all of the services and supports that a student wants or needs. Other districts deal with staffing shortages in a variety of areas and are limited in their capacities to provide every service for every student. Other districts can easily provide some accommodations to students and struggle to provide accommodations for others. Over the years, members of this committee have had varied interactions with our Special Education Department and programs, but as a reminder, no one on this committee is an expert in special education, and the committee as a whole is not in a position to impact any specific students' accommodations within the schools. As has been stated, it is not within the committee's purview to oversee any individual student's success or access to services. It is this committee's role, I apologize, it is in this committee's role to advocate for the district and support the administration to better use all resources available. The committee and the administration are in agreement that those individual student outcomes and decisions should be best left to private discussions among the educators, the administrators, and the families. Where this committee can impact special education is to continue to advocate for increased funding for, excuse me, from the state and local levels. On June 2nd, I submitted written testimony to the Joint Committee on Education's Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Hearing, calling for, among other things, approval of House Bill 597, which would reimburse communities for all in-district transportation as outlined in Chapter 71 of Mass General Laws. I also submitted a letter to the Joint Ways and Means Committee, calling on them to begin planning for the completion of the Student Opportunity Act by developing a recalculation of the Chapter 70 Funding Formula with suggestions on how to improve funding situations for communities like Attleboro. I have also been in touch with Mayor DeSimone about beginning the fiscal year 27, to plan for fiscal year 27, after the fiscal year 26 budget process is complete later this month. A common theme I heard from families and staff is communication and its correlation to happiness and frustration. For families that have been happy with services they received, they attributed it to clear and consistent communication with classroom educators, paraprofessionals, and administrators. For families that were among the most frustrated, they attributed at least part of it to what they believed was inconsistent messages or a lack of transparency. This summer, I intend to work with the administration to find ways to improve communication between educators and families, administrators and families, administrators and educators, and between all of these populations and the committee. The reformation of ACE PAC will play a key role, as was stated, in bridging some of these communication gaps, and I look forward to working with their new leadership. To further build that relationship, I also plan to appoint Ms. Porto as a liaison between ACE PAC and the committee. She and I both attended the initial reformation meeting of ACE PAC, and she has shared an interest in growing this relationship as well. I can only defeat, I can only speak definitively for myself, but I am confident that my fellow committee members will agree that this is important work that needs to be done and that we are all committed to every student in this district regardless of ability. We welcome every community member to engage with us in a respectful, thoughtful discussion about our programs, and look forward to the continued evolution of services in Attleboro. I will add that we continue to support and look forward to hearing from the administrators at the district and building levels, the classroom educators district-wide, and out of, in and out of special education, the paraprofessional staff in each building, the clerical staff across the district, all of whom come to work each day with the primary objective of supporting all of our students and families in the district to the best of their abilities. I apologize, that was lengthy, but as I said, it's been, it's the result of a number of discussions, and I felt like I needed to write it to try to put it into some type of organized fashion, so I apologize. So at this time, I'll invite the committee. Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Storrs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, you know, there's a reason why your organization is required by law. It's that important, and I think it's safe to say, everybody up here understands that. We rely on parents and guardians to let us know what is working and what is not working. We want to hear that. So it's very, you know, I'm very happy to see that ACE PAC has been revitalized, and I just want to thank the two of you, as well as any of the other officers who stepped up to volunteer for that position, to be able to, you know, reconnect the school district and ACE PAC, because that's how important you guys are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Any other comments, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeanne, Heather, all board members and general members, I just want to thank you for your commitment. It can be a lot of time and energy and effort, I know, but I'm excited about the work that's about to happen moving forward. As a School Committee member, I'm looking forward to your advice and that advisory role. You know, I think it will be important, one, we don't use this phrase specifically, but continuous improvement in the Attleboro School District is something that's really important, and I see ACE PAC having a direct role in this, and I'm just really excited for the future work together.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Porta?
I look forward to starting off the whole new process of ACE PAC with you guys, and very looking, much looking forward to next year and seeing it grow.
Thank you.
So needless to say, we are appreciative of your leadership and are here to support you both.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Domenici?
Thank you. Thank you to all board members who have stepped up. It's never easy. This isn't easy work, and to take leadership roles in what is not easy work is something to be commended, and I know that Rob has, I would agree, spoken on behalf of all of us rather eloquently. We are all here for any support you may need, and you are there to further our education. I've been on the board for School Committee for nearly eight years, and every year, Vaughn can attest to this, I am constantly asking her questions because I want to be as prepared to have the conversations that sometimes parents will come straight to us. So it'll be important for us to be able to, you know, be better educated, but also to be able to show them, hey, there is a, there is an organization that is here to help you with these questions, and that's going to be significant, and I think I look forward to. to seeing the fruits of that labor in next year and the years beyond. So thank you very much for your, for stepping up.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Domenici. Any final thoughts or questions? Thank you both.
Thank you for your time tonight.
The next item on the agenda is executive session. The Attleboro School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20A 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. The committee will return to open session immediately following the executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. For logistics purposes, the committee will convene an executive session in the superintendent's conference room, so anyone that's here in the, in the gallery can stay comfortably. This will be a roll call vote, so I'll start with Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Ms. Porta?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddis?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Frappier?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and we will go into executive session.[683.63]
I'll call the committee back to open session. I will take this opportunity to announce that as part of executive session, the committee voted to approve the following memorandums of agreement with collective bargaining units, those related to the extended school year coordinator, the high school department heads, extending the peer assistant review pilot program, creation of a stipend committee, and the unit B of the Attleboro Educators Association. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and for that I will turn it over to Mr. Sauer.
Thank you, Chairman. I have one update for the committee this evening. As the committee knows, but the public might not be aware, our candidate for principal of Attleboro High School, after accepting the position, had second thoughts and then rescinded that acceptance. This was obviously very disappointing news, but as I explained to the staff when I met with them after that news, I really believe that it's important that they not only get an experienced leader, but they get the leader that's the right fit and, you know, is fully invested in the work. And I appreciate that Ms. May Cumber decided that this wasn't the right fit for her, that we decided that, you know, now, rather than find out the hard way that that's where we were going to land. So again, as much as it was a disappointment, I wish her well and appreciate that, you know, she recognized that this wasn't going to work out for her and that she let us know. know, she recognized that this wasn't going to work out for her and that she let us know in a timely fashion so that we could shift gears. So on that front, you know, this is obviously an inconvenient time of year to be facing not having a principal. Campbell's leaving us June 30th, which is just over a week away, so July 1 is barreling at us. In meeting with the administration, we talked through the set of circumstances that we're facing, and, you know, we really believe that there are key pieces at Attleboro High School that are in place. We have administrators who have decades of experience, not only in the Attleboro Public Schools, but at Attleboro High School. And so we believe that if we can find a veteran administrator who can sit in the lead spot for a year in an interim role, that we really can move the school forward and continue with our plans for next year as they were designed. So that's the goal right now, and I am working hard to identify someone who has that experience that we'll need and is a good fit for the team and our community to serve in that role for a year as interim principal. My hope is that I will have an update for the committee by the end of the week on where that stands. But, you know, again, July 1 is coming at us, so we're on a tight timeline, and I hope to have that filled and in place for July 1.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, and thank you for your efforts. I know as part of the final stages of the search, you and the high school team went to great lengths to introduce the school community and the community at large to the finalists, so it was a disappointing turn of events last weekend, to say the least. But does anybody have any other, any questions or comments, Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I do take pause. You know, I have a little concern for the year, being that our director of CTE as well as the principal. That's, you know, that's a scary thing, but I do have faith that we have professionals, whether it's associate principals or what have you. We have the expertise to get us through this one year, and like you pointed out, I would rather take the time to hire the right person than to move fast just to fill a spot. So I think we're doing the right thing, it's just I still do have concerns, but I do have faith in the administration and believe that we can get through this one year.
Yes, we share your concerns, and in talking this through, you know, committed ourselves that the high school is going to need extra attention and support above and beyond what it normally gets, and we understand that we have a responsibility to ensure that they're successful based on the plan that we put forward, and this is the plan, so we're going to make it work. And ultimately, I will be responsible for whether or not next year is a success or not, so I'm fully committed to make sure that that happens.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Domenici?
Thank, just, I mean, being on that search committee, I mean, we were under no pressure to find anybody right now. That was made very clear to us, that we happened to find somebody at the time that we thought was worthy of passing on was exciting, obviously disappointing with the outcome, but the administration has, had been planning all along for the idea that this could be our reality, and to, you know, start a search up at a time where most of these searches take place, so I have full faith and confidence in the plan going forward, and I'll have full faith and confidence in the next search, so those are my comments.
Any other questions or comments?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Sawyer. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation for the 2025 academic year. I'll enter, the evaluation was provided to the committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. For the committee's information, the superintendent was evaluated on the same educational leadership standards that he was evaluated last year, but the committee used a more formal tool in doing so. Overall, in the four standard areas, the committee rated Superintendent Sawyer as exemplary in educa, excuse me, instructional leadership, exemplary in management and operations, proficient in family and community engagement, exemplary in professional culture, and exemplary overall. As was the case last year, these were not, no rating was by any means overwhelming from the feedback of the committee, and I think the text of the comments from the committee shows some pretty clear areas where we individually and collectively would like to see some improvements for the district, including obviously related to communications, but the district, or excuse me, the committee, generally speaking, values Superintendent Sawyer's leadership, the commitment to the community, and community-developed goals and objectives, the community-developed mission and vision for its schools. That's a very brief summary, but any addition, additional comments from the committee as it relates to the superintendent's evaluation, Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, you know, I just want to say, and it was part of my feedback to the chairman regarding your, you know, your evaluation, I very much value that you're not a micromanager, that you give ownership for every school and every department to those leaders, and you never try to make things political. You know, you're not out there promoting yourself to trying to sell a book or trying to get some other position in the future. You are dedicated to Attleboro Public Schools, you focus on what's important, and you never make things political, and that's what I really value about you, so thank you and keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. Any other comments, Mr. Larson?
I know we've all filled these out with our own personal comments, but I think it's important to highlight two of them. I mean, I think the weekly communication that we get from you, I think is critical because, you know, we can't be in 10 places every day to find out what's going on in the district, so I think that your communication style has always impressed me, and it continues to. And then, you know, the conversation that we just had, you know, I think one of the very important to me personally, just because it's something that I feel very strongly about, is we have these situations that come up with the principal at the high school. It can be anywhere throughout the district, and so to be constantly working on leadership and having, you know, as you've referred to, as a bench, a strong bench, to help step up in these situations, because these can happen every day, any day, across a lot of different positions, and I think your leadership style with your team has helped really promote the growth that we've seen in that group, and it will help us weather this situation and the ones that inevitably will always come forward in the future, so me, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any other questions, or any other comments or additions? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda are the minutes from our June 2, 2025 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any edits, comments, questions on the minutes that were provided in the packet? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll take all four items as one motion unless there's any concern from anyone on the committee. Seeing none, we have a motion to accept a donation from Bliss Restaurant for the 12-plus program in the amount of $166.52. Motion to accept a donation from Chipotle to DECA in the amount of $77.70. Motion to approve an overnight international field trip proposal for 186 grade eight students to travel to Washington, DC, May 5 through 8, 2026, and a motion to declare the Quello Middle School itemized list of obsolete curriculum books as surplus as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I did, I apologize, I missed this. The agenda reads May 5 through 8, 2025, related to the overnight field trip, but we are voting for 2026 as noted on the proposal itself. Any questions or comments?
Is that the number, is that the, that seems like a record, 186 grade eight students.
There's enough room for 186, 186, 10 if they would like to.
Yeah, I just, it just seems like every year it goes up and up, so, I know we had to add an extra bus last year, and so I just like seeing that so many kids have that opportunity, so I'm glad that we're able to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Domenici. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is our subcommittee meetings, and we have an update from our finance and budget subcommittee, which met on June 4. For that, I will turn it over to Subcommittee Chair Larson.
Thank you. So the committee did meet back on June 4. We reviewed the monthly budget reports. We are going to end the year well, approximately about, right around a 1% surplus. You know, the year is in the process of being closed up at this year, so we'll have more of an update in July, obviously. We had a brief MSBA update, obviously. This building is basically done, so that really limits how much of that there is. There is one item that we chatted about that we want to bring the committee up to speed with. We have a cooling tower at Thatcher Elementary School that has failed. We have a backup in place taking care of that, and we're working with the vendor as to some maintenance that either should have happened or didn't happen. Whether we knew we were supposed to do something or didn't know we were supposed to do something is part of the discussion, so we'll update that once that's resolved. And we had a update on the redistricting. The subcommittee has reviewed some preliminary data and had questions and went back to the, Ross?
Haber.
Thank you, Ross Haber, thank you. I had a brain cramp. To clarify some of the data, because it was showing some things that we questioned, let's just call it that, and so we will have more information for that over the course of the summer. So we will not be having a public session before the end of the school year, but we will do that first thing in the fall, once we're comfortable with the data going forward, so there'll be more to that coming up over the course of the summer. We do have two MO, excuse me, two motions to bring forward. The first is an annual approval for the lunch contracts. Even though we have a five-year contract, there is a vote that we have to take every year. So the first is a motion to approve the one-year renewal for the school lunch contract for the FY '26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or concerns, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the second is motion to approve the purchase of a maintenance truck and three tractors that we use in the district at different schools for plowing and for mowing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we are in need of one more vehicle to move some of our maintenance, one of our maintenance staff around. Obviously, we don't want them in their own personal vehicles for a number of reasons, liability and insurance and the rest of all that, so we're looking to pick up a small truck for that, and every, if, most of you should know, if you don't, every school actually has its own tractor that is used for mowing and assists in plowing, and three of them need to be replaced. So what we're looking to do is to purchase the one truck and the three tractors with an estimated total cost of the four units of about $115,000. Are there any questions about the second motion? Yes, Mr. Gettys?
Related to, so just to confirm, any capital purchases like this typically come from budget surplus and funds non-operational?
So we are, yeah, so we have had this discussion with City Hall, and we had a request to use some of our surplus so that we can purchase the vehicles now instead of waiting for free cash. So there was a request that was sent from the mayor's office down to city council, because in order to actually use current year, and correct me when I start going off the rails here, in order to use chapter 70 money for a capital purchase during the existing school year, the city and the city council have to approve our request to spend these funds instead of waiting for the free cash to be certified and get the money back from the city, which would be sometime in October or November. Those, that process has gone from the mayor's office down to city council and is in the process of being approved by the city council, so once that vote is con-
They approved on the per-
They did approve, thank you. So that vote has happened, and so the request has all been approved. Now it's up to this body to approve the purchase of the four items.
Thank you. Mr., I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, because Rob started to go where I was headed, and that was, I do recall watching the council meeting, and I believe the amount appropriated was just under half a million. So my question is, this is a smaller fraction, you know, this is about a quarter of that. Are there any other planned purchases that we may see in the coming months?
Yes.
We have a request from the council for funds for the pitch replacement across the other eight buildings in the district, all as the access point replacement.
Sorry, Mr. Fortato, the access point replacement at Willett, and what was the other?
Switches.
Switches in the other buildings.
So once, once we have these in place, we'll be bringing them to the full committee for approval. This is what we have so far that's ready to come forward.
Awesome, thank you. Much-needed, much-needed purchases.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. That's the extent of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next item on the agenda is open forum. This is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Each open forum participant will be given three minutes to address the committee. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record before we start the clock. Mr. Ford, seeing that you got up there pretty quickly, I did want to take a moment to, to express, to give credit that the discussion around special education that I spoke to earlier started with, with some of your public comments. I, I think while I have, while I have disagreed with your approach at times and found some of your approach to be somewhat counterproductive at times, I do hope and invite you to continue a respectful and solution-based discussion going forward.
Thank you. Oh, Joey Ford, 44 R. Smith Street. Good evening. Tonight I want to do something different. This is my first time standing before you, not in protest, but in gratitude. I want to begin by sincerely thanking Chairman Rob Gettys. I listened closely to your remarks earlier, and I heard something that I haven't heard clearly before, acknowledgement, recognition of the pain, the frustration, and the concern that many families, mine included, have been expressing for some time now. You didn't have to say my name. I know when someone is speaking to me and for me, and for that, I'm deeply grateful. When a district begins to acknowledge its shortcomings, when leaders start speaking honestly and publicly about the need to improve, to do better, and to truly support all children, especially those most often left behind, it changes everything. Because in education, the hardest part isn't finding solutions, it's deciding to see the problem. And when a school committee chair gives voice to concerns that are usually met with silence or defensiveness, that's not just politics, that's courage, and I sincerely hope that what was said tonight will ripple outward, not just in words, but in actions, policies, and accountability. I hope it becomes a culture shift. That's how trust begins to rebuild, that's how systems begin to change. Now, if I may, I want to shift the spotlight for a moment to someone who represents everything we hope for in public education. My youngest son is in pre-K at ELC, and I want to personally thank his teacher, Ms. Lauren. Ms. Lauren, the care, creativity, and patience you show every day. You don't just teach children, you believe in them, and you make parents like me believe again, too. Your work doesn't go unnoticed. In a world that's too quick to criticize and too slow to praise, I want you to know, you are making a difference. And to the other educators like her, those who show up every day quietly doing the right thing when no one's watching, you are the heart of this system. You're the reason we keep pushing, and you are what give parents like me hope. So tonight I want to say thank you, and to Chairman Gettys, to Ms. Lauren, and to every person in this district who chooses in small and big ways to do the right thing instead of what is easy. Let's make sure that this moment isn't just symbolic. Let's make it a new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee as part of open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. A couple of updates. We are tentatively planned for a special school committee meeting this Wednesday, June 18, 2025, here in the Zito Conference Room. That will be related to approving the city's appropriation for the fiscal year 2026 budget. If for some reason the municipal council does not approve the budget tomorrow night, then that meeting will be postponed to June 26. As a reminder, there is no school this Thursday, June 19, an observation of the Juneteenth holiday. And this Friday, June 20, is a half-day, the last day of school, and is also the deadline for transportation registration and payments to be submitted. Any other updates from the committee, Mr. Domenici?
Just one related to the calendar, so I got clarification and just wanted to say it publicly for other folks, because the public calendar for '24-'25 lists the 18 as a half-day, and that was based on the fact that that was the planned last day of school. Because we had the snow day, we pushed out to the 20th. The 18th is a full day. 19th is a holiday. The 20th is a half-day. So I had a lot of questions, and so I wanted to get that clarity. Thank you to the administration for making that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Domenici. Any other updates from the committee or new business to consider? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.